Good evening. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is March 25, 2025. Please join me in saying I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please bow your heads. As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the opportunity to serve our community. May wisdom guide our decisions, fairness shape our discussions, and compassion lead our actions. Grant us the courage to face challenges, the patience to seek solutions, and the vision to build a brighter future. May this meeting reflect our commitment to collaboration, respect, and service. I'd like to recognize our Miami Valley Communication Council TV operator Mike Saproni. Mike, thank you for your assistance, and I hear you have some assistance up there yourself. Okay. We'll introduce him at a later date. Mr. Sullivan has an excused absence this evening. I would like at this point to call upon Mrs. Hall for her to approve the minutes.
Your Honor, I have reviewed the minutes, and I find them in order. And I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay, we have a couple of appointments tonight and proclamations. Special proclamation for Fair Housing Month, and I'm going to ask Mr. Suddith to read that.
Thank you, Mayor. The proclamation of tonight is to recognize April 2025 as Fair Housing Month, and it reads, "Whereas April is traditionally designated as Fair Housing Month by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and locally we are commemorating Fair Housing Month with the theme 'Celebrating Fair Housing: The Cornerstone of Equity and Housing Opportunity' in order to highlight the Fair Housing Act Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended and the rights and responsibilities embodied therein. And whereas April 11, 2025, marks the 57th anniversary of the passage of the Federal Fair Housing Act Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, religion, national origin, sex, familial status, or disability, and encourages equal housing opportunities and residential integration for all citizens. And whereas the principle of fair housing is not only law but a basic human necessity and inalienable right inscribed in the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and whereas the Miami Valley Fair Housing Center is engaged in passionately pursuing its mission to eliminate housing discrimination in the Miami Valley, the State of Ohio, and nationally. And the Miami Valley Fair Housing Center has been recognized regionally, statewide, and nationally for its creativity and effectiveness in pursuing its mission. And whereas the Miami Valley Fair Housing Center and the Dayton Realtors are committed to continuing to oppose and address housing discrimination in our community. Now therefore, on behalf of the Mayor Peggy Lehner of the City of Kettering, Ohio, to hereby proclaim April 2025 to be Fair Housing Month here in the City of Kettering, Ohio, and urge all of our citizens to understand and exercise their right to equal housing opportunities."
Thank you, Mr. Suddith. And we will now call up the face of fair housing in Montgomery County, Mr. Jim McCarthy. Come on up to the podium, Jim.
Your Honor, the mayor and council members, thank you very much. On behalf of my Board of Directors and all of the staff of the Fair Housing Center, we thank you for your leadership over the years in providing support for the Miami Valley Fair Housing Center and encouraging folks to exercise their rights to equal housing opportunity. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. There you go. Good to see you. Take care. Okay, we have another proclamation. This is in honor of CDBG Week, and I'm going to ask Ms. DuVal to read that.
Your Honor, I have a proclamation for Community Development Week, which states, "Whereas the week of April 21 through 25, 2025, has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate community development block grant CDBG programs. And whereas a community block grant program has existed since 1975 to provide local governments with resources to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing in a suitable living environment and expanding economic opportunities principally for persons of low and moderate income. And whereas the community development block program has strengthened America's communities such as the City of Kettering by addressing pressing neighborhood and human service needs and having significant impact on our local economy through job creation and retention, physical redevelopment, and improved tax base. And whereas the City of Kettering has effectively administered and customized its community development block grant program for over 40 years to implement various programs and projects in the areas of affordable housing, economic development, public facilities, and public works improvements, homelessness, and planning that has contributed to the improvement of the physical, economic, and social conditions in our city. And whereas the City of Kettering is committed to addressing discrimination in the community by supporting programs to educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure every American of their right to fair housing. Now therefore, on behalf of Peggy Lehner, Mayor of the City of Kettering, Ohio, on behalf of City Council in the community, do hereby proclaim April 21 through 25, 2025 to be Community Development Week in the City of Kettering, Ohio, and urge all citizens to join in recognizing community development programs and the important role that they play in our community."
Thank you very much, Mr. DuVal. Receiving, accepting the proclamation tonight is Angela Rayman, our own staff member in the Development Director. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was good. Let me get back in. Not going to say anything? No, okay. We have no public hearings this evening. At this point, anyone wishing to speak before council with comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to address council at this point? Okay, seeing none, we will now move on to ordinances and second reading. We have three ordinances and second reading tonight, and we will start with Mrs. Fisher.
Well, Your Honor, I do have an ordinance to amend the Prue Woods Development Plan. It is requested by the City Manager's Office, and I move for its approval.
Second. Okay, let's see. Brian.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This ordinance, as stated, will amend the Prue Woods Development Plan. On June 9 of 2015, the City passed Ordinance 4248-15 approving the Economic Development Plan for what is now the Prue Woods subdivision. This plan directed the expenditures of tax increment financing revenue created from the Prue Woods subdivision to pay for the construction of Prue Woods Drive. Tonight's legislation modifies the original Economic Development Plan to allow the expenditure of tax increment finance revenues created from the Prue Woods subdivision to also fund public improvements on Dorothy Lane as well as at the Kettering Recreation Complex. Happy to answer any questions or concerns the council may have regarding this legislation.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a reading, an ordinance in second reading to amend the text of various sections of the City of Kettering zoning code. This is being requested by the Planning and Development Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Robelard.
Thank you, Your Honor. This particular text amendment amends several sections of the zoning code primarily related to setbacks within the suburban pattern district. This is especially useful for some existing structures throughout the city that we are looking to have reused and redeveloped. The Planning Commission held a public hearing, and after that public hearing recommended approval. The City Council held a public hearing, receiving no comments. I'll be happy to answer any comments, any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have an ordinance to levy special assessments for the construction and repair of curbs, sidewalks, drive approaches, and related, here we go, opportunances for the 2024 curb sidewalk and drive approach program, City Project Number 05-124. This is requested by the Engineering Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Chikowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This legislation will levy assessments for the 2024 curb sidewalk and drive approach repair program as noted, City ID, Project ID Number 05-124. The project includes properties on the attached list. A list of the final assessments is on file with the Clerk of Council. The public notice has been advertised for 21 days. The 14-day objection period ended on February 22 of 2025, and the City received no objections. The period to pay cash will be until August 15 of 2025, and all assessments not paid in cash shall be certified to the county auditor to be collected according to our assessment policy term and interest schedule as provided by the Finance Director beginning in January of 2026. Happy to answer any questions or concerns the council may have regarding this matter.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Just one, are they notified any other way besides a public notice? Do they receive letters from us?
Yes, they are provided direct mail to the House.
Okay, anyone else? All right, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. We'll now move on to resolutions.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into a demolition grant agreement for the property located at 4086 Glen Heath Drive. The estimated and budgeted cost are $25,000. This is requested by the City Manager's Office, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Chidowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Oaks Tree Development, while preparing the lot at 4086 Glen Heath Drive, discovered previously unknown concrete and construction materials buried when they were beginning their excavation for a basement on a new single-family market-rate home. The pro forma provided to the city from Oaks Tree Development indicates that without support from the city to address this issue, development on this property is unlikely to ever occur. The construction of a new market-rate single-family home on this site meets the objectives of the demolition program. This grant award is a matching grant, not to exceed $25,000, with reimbursement limited to expenses incurred specific to the excavation, removal, and disposal of the buried construction materials found on site, as well as the costs incurred to replace said materials with clean fill materials. Happy to answer any questions or concerns the council may have.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions, concerns? Okay, call the roll.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to adopting amended and restated guidelines for the facade and site improvement program and the demolition grant program. This is requested by Planning and Development Department, and I do move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Robelard.
Thank you, Your Honor. This particular resolution allows the City to use and market the demolition and site and facade improvement programs throughout the city. It does one of four things. One is allows us to use it citywide, increases the amount from $25,000 match to $50,000 match. This was adopted about 10 years ago, and since then, prices have increased, and $25,000 doesn't go as far as it used to. It allows us to use it on selected residential projects. And the fourth thing is there's just miscellaneous cleanup items throughout those guidelines to help clarify the guidelines. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into a demolition grant agreement for the property located at 3618 Wilmington Pike. It is estimated cost and budget, both are $50,000. It is requested by Planning and Development Department, and I move for its approval.
Second. Mr. Robelard.
Thank you, Your Honor. This particular address is the former Pepito's Restaurant located on Wilmington Pike. It's been sitting vacant for many years now. After working with the current property owner, we're in agreement to work with them on this demolition grant agreement to remove the building, remove the parking lot, and any upper tenancies that are on that site. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions? I'd like to practice the word of the night.
Thank you for that education.
All right, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
I have a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into multiple contracts with LCT Software LLC and TruePoint Solutions LLC to purchase a subscription for the installation of new plan review software for the Planning and Development Engineering and Fire Departments. This is being requested by Planning and Development. The estimated cost is $116,520. The amount budgeted is $37,000, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Robelard.
Thank you, Your Honor. This allows us to enter into an agreement with LCT, otherwise known as Evolve. That's the name of the software that will upgrade our plan review software program. We've been using a, what I call, a bootstrap setup programs to electronically do plan review for about 20 years now. We're one of the first cities to do electronic plan review in Ohio and one of the few throughout the United States back then. Now it's a normal part of business, but it is old, it is awkward and clunky. But this allows us to interact with the public, interact with developers, interact with architects in a much more easier and efficient way. Provides better customer service, and one of my main goals is to decrease the number of repeat plan reviews that we do with architects and developers for time so that we can get from the permit process to actual construction much more quicker. Just to clarify, when I was first planning this project, I figured that it was, the cost was going to be about $38,000. But the, as things progressed, and this is a three-year program, we have to encumber all the funds for those three years at once. And I didn't quite totally anticipate the installation costs were going to be as high as they were, but they're about 20, also about $28,000. So, this is over a three-year period. I appreciate your support. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Sounds well overdue. So, call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the City Manager to accept and expand a grant from the Kettering Parks Foundation for the Parks, Recreation, Cultural Arts Department's Financial Assistant Program. Estimated cost is $11,071, and is requested by Parks and Recreation Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second. Okay, Mr. Grayson.
Yes, this is our, Kettering Parks Foundation is donating $11,071, $11,071 for ongoing financial assistance program that supports low-income households. Last year in 2024, 78 individuals were assisted through these dollars, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the City Manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for the replacement of the fountain lights at Lincoln Park Civic Commons. The estimated and budgeted cost is $45,000. This is requested by the Public Service Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Grayson.
Yes, Your Honor. Fairly self-explanatory item, $45,000 is budgeted to replace the existing lights within the fountain. These are submerged lights. They're approximately 11 years old and at the end of their useful life, and many of the lights have already failed, and so we're trying to replace them and have them all functioning. Be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Anyone have any questions? Call the roll.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the City Manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for the pressure washing of concrete services and amenities at various locations throughout the city. The estimated cost is $40,000, the same as the amount budgeted. This is requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department, and I do move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Grayson.
Your Honor, we have a lot of concrete, and periodically we have to pressure clean it and seal it, just like you do at your driveway at home. And so, we have budgeted for that, and we'll be issuing bids, and we want to do that at the Adventure Reef Water Park. We also want to clean the Pollen Park fence, and then other concrete areas throughout the City of Kettering's facilities. Be glad to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the City Manager to contract with South Community for crisis intervention program support services. The estimated cost is $49,780 with the budget of $71,000. It is requested by the Police Department, and I move for approval.
Second. Okay, Mr. Grayson.
Yes, Your Honor, we are blessed to have a partnership with South Community Behavioral Services and have a crisis intervention staff member assisting, providing assistance to our officers and our public. We do that through this agreement. The amount for the upcoming year is $49,780. We think it provides very important services, and recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the City Manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for branding services. This is being requested by Communications and Engagement Department. The estimated cost and the funds available is $50,000, and I move for approval.
I second for vote.
Okay, Mr. Grayson.
Yes, Your Honor. The fiscal year 2024 budget includes $50,000 to hire a marketing and communications consultant to assist the City's efforts to implement Strategic Plan Goal 6.1, which recommended an updated and unified communication strategy in branding. Branding is a process in marketing and communications that helps organizations develop a unique, consistent, and effective identity. As you know, the City has numerous logos, images, colors, and publications that have been developed over a long period of time. This process will work to better unify these. The strategic plan recommended, recommendation recognized the need to refresh the City's communications and marketing strategy by ensuring there is a unique and easily identified brand for the City of Kettering. This will come along with effective strategies to promote the brand to residents, visitors, businesses, and hopefully future businesses. Be glad to answer any questions and recommend approval of this.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Hearing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
I will vote no with the caveat, I totally agree with the importance for branding our city. I would challenge our own internal staff to try to move that along.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Kettering, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2025. Estimated cost $115,101, and is requested by Finance Department, I do move for approval.
Second. Okay, Mr. Grayson.
Yes, Your Honor. The supplemental appropriation, first one's planning and development software, the initial setup installation, and annual subscription fees for the item that you approved earlier and that was artfully described by Mr. Robelard is $116,520. It's a 60-month agreement, and we're required to encumber the entire amount, the entire three years at once. Since the 2025 budget included only the $37,000 funding for a one-year subscription, there's a supplemental appropriation for the $79,520 difference. Additionally, we need a supplemental appropriation for 24, I'm excited about this one, $24,510, which is requested for the removal of streetlight fixtures and overhead spans of wire from RTA poles on Far Hills Avenue from Stroop Road to the Oakwood Corp line. So, these are the trolley wires that are no longer used and haven't been used in years coming down. The RTA is removing those wires in this section of Far Hills Avenue. That will involve the removal of poles that support the electric power to the, that formerly supported electric power to the buses, as well as support streetlights that are owned by Miami Valley Lighting. If you drive up and down there, you'll see some of those poles doing double duty, holding both the trolley wire and having a streetlight. Our contract with Miami Valley Lighting requires that the City pay for removal of any streetlights, and we have been awarded federal funds to construct a full improvement of the street lighting system on that section of Far Hills. However, we're not going to get that funding and be able to do that project until 2027. So, in the meantime, Miami Valley Lighting streetlights that are not located on RTA poles will remain operational. However, some of them will, the ones that are on the poles will come down, and so we'll have a little bit of reduced lighting along that stretch until the 2027 project. The last supplemental is for the Financial Assistance Program for PRC that we discussed earlier. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. That concludes our resolutions for this evening. We have no ordinances in first reading. Mrs. Haislip, do we have any certifications and petitions this evening?
Your Honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Okay, very good. I will call on Mr. Grayson now for his City Manager's Report and community update.
Yes, Your Honor. I want to highlight once again our micro enterprise assistance program. The spring 2025 courses are on your screen and available. The spring 2025 courses are on your screen and available. We encourage people who are interested in starting a business that qualify to attend one of these important technical assistance networking and funding meetings. No surprise that, that as we near April, that we're talking about tax season. The city of Kettering income tax return is due April 15th. A couple important notes on that. Tax forms will not be mailed to you. They're available on our website, or you can use our e-filing. You can also stop into our office for assistance from our outstanding tax division staff. We really encourage people to avoid late filing fees by getting their return to our office or postmarking it by April 15th. I also want to remind everyone that all residents, including part-year residents of the city of Kettering who are 18 years of age or older, are required to file an annual income tax return, regardless of income or employment status. And non-residents earning income from which Kettering tax has not been withheld at the correct rate of 2.25% must file a return. There's more information on the screen and certainly on our website, and if you need to talk to somebody, please don't hesitate to call. Our staff would be glad to help you. Want to highlight Tree Fest, two events coming up. We are a tree city, and we have, trees are important to our community. And Saturday, April 19th, we will be having Tree Fest, 9:00 AM to noon at Gentilly Nature Park. This is our annual Arbor Day celebration, and we encourage you to help plant trees, clean up the park, dedicate the city's Arbor Day tree, bring shovels, gloves, and a watering container if you have them. We'll put you to work. Once you've done a little of that work and you've helped plant a tree at Gentilly Park, we encourage you to come to Tree Love, 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. This is in partnership with Udora Brewing Company, and it's a celebration of trees and craft beer. Our DEA Drug Takeback Day is Saturday, April 26, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at our Kettering Police Department. This is an opportunity to clear out your cabinets, get rid of some of the unwanted drugs that may be in your house, and we appreciate KPD for continuing this service. Our spring blood pressure clinic dates are on the screen, and those are at the Dayton Metro Library Kettering Moraine Branch on Far Hills. We appreciate our partnership with them. That is in the back study room, and if you think you need your blood pressure checked, we encourage you to attend these clinics. Sustainability is one of our strategic plan goals, and in partnership with Montgomery County, Miami Township, the cities of Centerville and Dayton, Kettering is offering rain barrels and compost bins for a limited time while supplies last. The rain barrels are $76, compost bins are 68. You can see how you can order those at rainbarrelprogram.org/mc. That stands for Montgomery County. We encourage people to participate in these programs, take advantage of these good costs for these. Our Kettering Leadership Academy is currently accepting applications for the class of 25 and 26, and as each of you know, it is a unique program where you have the opportunity to learn about our community while growing personally and professionally. We encourage you to get your application in by June 3rd, and if you need more information, please contact our staff. And lastly, get your FRAZE tickets to one of our outstanding shows this summer. This list is not complete. Since I put this together, we have announced Gavin DeGraw and Grammy Award-winning Colby Calais on June 7th, so an additional great concert. As you, there are a great mix of artists running a range of genres and probably more to come, so we encourage you to get your tickets soon. That's all I have, Your Honor. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, lots going on. Anyone have any questions? Okay, once again, thank you. At this time, if you would like to come speak before city council, please come down to the podium. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. Is there anyone who would like to speak before city council this evening? No volunteers. Last chance. You allow, ask city council to give their reports. Start with Mrs. Fisher.
So I'll add on the tax return. I will tell you, there's no better way to show up early, and it's a quick five-minute thing. Don't, don't be frustrated. Just give it, give them all your papers, and they make it happen like magic. So that's my recommendation. Highlight that I have is I met a great gentleman, a new business owner, Ray King, who opened up King's Coin along with Mrs. Hall and Mr. Scott. He claims he is a concierge of coins, and he, his tagline is "Coin collecting is the hobby of kings. Customers should be treated as royalty, not peasants." And I will tell you, this gentleman is full of energy and excited to be located here in Kettering. That's all I have, Your Honor.
And my husband, who's an avid coin collector, was in bed recovering from surgery and was just so disappointed that he couldn't go to that room.
Yeah, well, he needs to go meet him.
They can't be there to be treated like a king.
To be treated like a king.
He wants to be treated like a king.
Well, he would be.
All right. Ms. Fisher? Nothing for the good of the order tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Fisher stole some of my thunder on the business opening. I'll add one comment about Mr. King and his coin exchange. It's a very small company, very small. However, he had a choice on where to locate. He could have gone to one of the other suburbs, and I asked him that, and he says, nope, I chose Kettering. And, you know, even though it's a very, very small business, business is one of the life bloods of any community, so I thank him for relocating to Kettering. And I want to add one personal note to what, what Mr. Grayson said about the blood pressure checks. About 18 months ago, on a whim, I stopped by and had my blood pressure checked, which never was a problem for me. However, it was discovered my blood pressure was at dangerous levels, and it got me to my doctor and got me on medication, which is under control now, but I never would have had it checked, other than just on a whim, I stopped.
That's what city council would do to you.
That's exactly right. So if it's citizens, if you don't check your own with your own monitor, or you don't do a regular doctor thing, stop by there just for your own peace of mind or your spouse's peace of mind.
I am happy to say that the Kettering Leadership Academy had the best day, Public Safety Day, a couple weeks ago, and I want to thank Chief Robbins from the Fire Department and Captain Adam Savino, who is one of the class members, but he planned the day and all the officers helped, and it was a wonderful day, and as always, everyone learned a lot. Mr. Chidowski rappelled down a wall. It was great. I have video, willing to share if anybody wants to see it. So, thank you all, and as Matt said, applications for next year are open until June 3rd, so that's exciting. And it's appropriate that my council is in the audience with us today from the library. Mrs. Fisher and I got to go to the leadership, the leadership breakfast at Dayton Metro Library, and it was a wonderful day, and it's, it's a good reminder of all the services that the libraries provide. They are truly a cornerstone of the community, and they make a huge difference. So, everyone, use your library cards. I assume we all have one? All right, that's it.
No report from me tonight.